We'll call this meeting back to order. We'll begin the evening with a moment of silence for reflection. If you so choose, a prayer or drawing a moment of silence to yourself or reflect, do so at this moment. Afterwards, if you would join me in a complete. And if you all would join me in a question, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have anybody that wishes to speak for our public comment? We have Ms. Gail Camp at 22 South Chesapeake Avenue, it's a pleasure. We're out of time there.
Yes.
All right, everyone, full of care.
As most of you know, I'm Gail Camp. I have been a resident and owner of Culture for, or since August of 2005. And I thank you for allowing me the time to speak tonight. First, I want to thank you for opening up the process for appointing a replacement councilperson on Mayor Lakeley's former seat. Thanks also to Mayor Lakeley and to Councilperson Lane for responding to my email about this issue. I'm also thankful for the free press in our community. While I did not alert the press to my concerns, I was pleased that they were watching these issues for transparency in our democratic government. I was pleased to see that the Citizen Times continues to be a law judge and to report on what I received to be a violation of North Carolina sunshine laws. While I do believe that this council should hold the application process open for a longer period, I believe that taking applications is a correct action at this time. I don't necessarily see the rush to go to the seat. I wish it could be extended for more than a couple of weeks, but that's not my call to make. I also believe that information regarding any potential candidates should be presented to Fletcher residents for full vetting. Since the representative will be serving as an unelected official for almost two years without any campaign term, to allow residents to know that, or to know any potential appointees, this appointment process should be open and transparent and with time allowed for that to happen. What is the rush again? Transparency is absolutely essential to a democratic system of government. As it stands, Fletcher citizens have only one choice for public comment or one chance for public comment tonight before the decision is made. I hope that does not mean that the first person nominated by email to councilmembers and mentioned as an aside in the December meeting has already been chosen by council. I hope this process is not for show, a charade, a pretense, just to say that you have made this decision openly. Sadly, my experience with this council in the past is that decisions are made before truly hearing what the votes impacted have to say. And in my experience, council has rejected very qualified people to serve on town boards for no other reason than personal analyst, for my perspective. In an attempt to learn more on the person that was nominated, I looked at public records. Of serious concern is that since he was appointed to planning his zoning board in September of 2018, there have been 13 minutes, he has missed four of them. In my view, past behavior is indicative of future behavior. Thank you.
How about that, very much? Do you have a moment for a public comment?
Okay, go ahead.
You'll say the name of your actor?
Fran Olson, 33 St. Blue Ridge, who just wanted to say thank you for hearing the concerns of the public and taking the time to carry out a more thorough process and try to identify the best candidate we have. Very well, my opinion is to read, read most data. Standing Fletcher citizen who works hard to make this community a better place. I have a lot of respect for him. If he turns out to be the right nominee, that's great. It's important that we go through a process. Councilman Lance, on the need to have a quick process to get someone in place ahead of the budget is, I hear you. I would point out that we do not have a recording or broadcast or publish, publishing mechanism in place for council. It's 2022. There's River, Andersonville, Henderson County, Asheville. There are very few that don't, our size, have their meetings. What happens at Town Hall, available for public consumption and to have, if that were in place, there'd be no worry about somebody not being here for, for me to be all available for them to consume. It's 2022, it's time, and that should be a top priority this year. Please, thank you.
Anybody else that wishes to speak during public comment? Seeing none, we move on to the approval of the minutes. Are there any corrections, additions, or amendments to the minutes presented? Seeing, hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
No.
You got a second?
Sir.
All of the papers say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Minutes are approved. Our name is Officer Council. No Officer Council, move on to the consent agenda. Are there any questions on the second agenda? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
No.
You got a second?
Second.
All those papers say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Consent agenda is approved. Next, I have a long agenda to continue with on the public here. Do we have anybody wishing to speak during the public hearing, uh, speaking related to the town center project? Seeing none, do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
No.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those papers, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Public hearing is closed. We also have Mr. Bob Jessup at the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I appreciate you giving us a chance to come and present to you this. My name is Bob Jessup. I'm a lawyer at the law firm Sanford-Holzhauser. We've been working with the town on this project for a good long time now. Particularly my colleague Ashley Anderson, who's been here when I was here at the previous meeting. I'm here just to go over the highlights of the different agreements that are proposed for the Harton Fletcher project between you and the designated developers and owners, just to give a high level of view of what the town is agreeing to do and what it's getting back in return. When that's done, I understand that the developers may have a presentation, and then if you have to answer any questions at any point along the way. If you're, if you're so inclined, the action we'd be looking for would be to approve the agreements as presented and substantially the form presented. So we've had a lot of discussions between the town representatives and the developer representatives about the development of property there at the intersection of Hendersonville and Standing Bridge Road. The ultimate outcome of the discussions is that the developer is going to buy that property for $2.4 million. You've had extensive discussions on what that development has to include, and those are spelled out in your agreements in terms of the mixed-use nature of it. And that you're going to be cooperating with each other in this development, in part because the town is agreeing to remove some, all the buildings that are on that property, I shouldn't have said some, because that was a real poetic invention. All the buildings on that property, and then to construct a connector road on what I would call the backside of that property. And in return, the town is going to reimburse the developer for up to $150,000 of the cost of building that connector road. In addition, the town and developer have worked together to acquire two adjoining parcels that the North Carolina DOT owns now. It can sometimes be a real undertaking to get DOT to sell property. They're more of a buying business than a selling business. We've also said that the total benefit to the developer from the town, I might have seen $350,000. That's the, includes the cost of taking down buildings and the reimbursable cost of the, of the road construction. You've had an outside analysis done by First Try Advisors. It's a financial advisory firm that's worked with the town before, has applied practice across North Carolina, to tell you that that's, the program you've been shown is achievable. The one thing we also want to make sure that we mention though is that until the assessed value of the property that you're transferring exceeds $15 million, you won't have any obligation to make any payments to the developer. So that's their requirement to get the value, actual value of the property there up to $15 million. Now, also, we want to make sure that from an understanding point of view for both you and the public, this is an economic development set of agreements. This is, we're doing this because we think this is going to enhance tax on business property and business prospects for the town. This is not a commitment on any land use agreements. The land use process is separate from this process, and the developer has to. The developer has to go through all those same processes, both at the beginning and as things go along, if they need any permissions from the town. I'd be happy to answer any questions, but that's a high-level review of what the town is agreeing to do in connection with this set of agreements.
Do we have any questions?
Real quick, um, with the layout, everything, you know, EDA, everything, uh, is there ever going to be a situation, I think we talked about it before, is on the residential piece of the, if I asked the remaining dealers, if it's not looking possibly going like a market study and saying if it's peaceful or there's more need for retails, uh, to go to the first floor or residential up, or, you know, I could say toward the end right there.
What I would tell you is that any agreement can be modified by the parties. The developers making certain commitments now for uses and mixed uses. If they turn out not to be viable, or they have a better idea, they can always come back to you and say, this is the way we need to do it. And then it'll be up to you to judge the credibility and whether that makes sense to you as something that's in the town's interest. And that's throughout the life of this agreement.
She's up.
What I do like is they did introduce the numbers on the residential from three to two, so we do appreciate that, thank you for that.
I'm sorry, you're welcome, friends. Uh, I'll be sitting right here as the, this part of the agenda proceeds in case you have any other questions or anything else that we could help. But thanks again for giving us the chance to work, to be honest. Thanks, girl.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and for the council. Good evening, I will do with WGL Engineering. Good to be before you again tonight. I'm here with Mark Lewis and Paul O'Dell. These gentlemen, I think you all have a chance to meet. They are the developers for this project, and we do have a short presentation. Some of this will be rehashed to a number of you. We think it's important, though, that it's very clear what's spelled out in the agreement, what's proposed, and also to give a chance to answer questions. Hopefully, we can get this going and, um...
I got the second one, there you go.
Yeah, we go. Great. So I'll start by saying there's, there's been a lot of heavy lifting on this project. It's, this is, this has been going on about 18 months now, and we want to thank, genuinely thank your town staff, they have worked incredibly hard working through this process. Ashley Love's cohort has worked tirelessly. We want to thank you all as, as council for working with us. We realize there's a lot of back and forth. There always are with, with projects like this. What we want to relay to you is that we're excited about the opportunities. We're excited about where this project is going, and we think where we've come to is a good place from our side, and I hope you all feel the same way. This goes back to, to the middle of 2020, talking with Mark about the letter of interest. Submitted proposal on this in September of 20. Made a presentation to this council in December, almost a year ago, similar to this. We made a presentation to the planning board in July, getting into some of the technical planning aspects of the project and making sure that the planning board was comfortable with the project. Lots of efforts to get to this point, including meetings with DOT, meetings with Blue Ridge Southern. So again, thank you all of you for working with us to get us to this point. I know for the general public, it may seem like this kind of comes out of the blue. There's, there's a lot of effort to get to this point, for sure. So I'm going to swing through this, and certainly if you all have questions, please feel free to, to stop me at any point. This is just a part of your original Harton Fletcher design. This shows clock tower and some of the look, some of the precedent images. And this was sort of our starting point. When we came to you, when we started looking at this piece of property and working with Mark and with Paul, what does this project need to look like to, to meet the town's requirements? And of course, as we look at the, the property you see today, you can see Hendersonville Road, you can see East Anne Bridge Road, you can see the existing buildings there. Obviously, the town has had a different vision of what this property could be, and we're excited about, about the direction that this is going. This shows the, the concept plan. This shows the idea, as Bob had mentioned, the connector road adjacent to the railroad tracks. This is a, that connector road is something that we have discussed with Department of Transportation, and they certainly have interest in and think it would be an advantage. We're showing a total of, of six buildings on the property. Two are residential at this point, the rest are mixed-use buildings. I'm going to flip on to the, to the site plan. This is the site plan that, some of the text may be a little difficult to read from this, this end. Basically, starting on my left side, we're looking at a convenience store. We're looking at restaurants and retail with drive-through. We're looking at two mixed-use buildings, and we're looking at two residential buildings on the end. And one of the points of discussion over the last couple of weeks have been to keep all of those buildings at no more than two stories. And that's been something that our team through discussions have found acceptable. Commissioner Councilman Lance, you mentioned the idea of the market study. I think if, if I were to bring Mark up here, his, his story to you would be, he would rather do all retail, he would rather do all mixed-use. We think it's important, as the agreement stands today, to keep the residential in there. It does provide us some flexibility. But if, as we go through our new diligence period, we find that the property can support additional commercial, I think we'll be back in front of you talking to you about that. So that is something that we're committed to look into further. This overall is the site plan that, the vision that we see for the property that we've shared with you in the past. Again, I'm going to go through this fairly quickly, but stop me at any point. This shows kind of visions of the buildings, the mixed-use building that you see in the upper right corner. That's right on the, on the corner of East Anne Bridge and Highway 25. You can see the clock tower there. You see at the bottom the look of the convenience store. I think one of the comments was that, that we got the planning board, was that that looks like a bank or a library. And that was kind of interesting, again, that was paying homage again to the Town Hall. The restaurant building, while it has not been updated, would match the same architecture. It would have the same brick facade with the, with the black roof, it would match the Town Hall. And again, that was sort of the starting point for the direction of the design of the facility to, to pay homage to the Town Hall. That's just some of the look of the buildings. This is, these are perspective views. This shows a little bit of a bird's eye view, looking down, kind of from north to south. You can see the mixed-use buildings on the corner, the residential back to the, back to the east. Obviously, the way those look right now, they're showing up as three-story. We're making, making the commitment that those will be no more than two-story. And then you can see, as you go on further down, the, the restaurant and convenience stores there. In summary, we've got two, two-story residential buildings with 36 units. Both of those will be about 16,000 square feet roughly. Two, two-story mixed units, mixed-use buildings, basically right on Highway 25 at the corner, roughly 13,500 square feet and 18,260 square feet. And then two additional single-story mixed-use buildings, but they will be constructed to two-story height, again, to, to meet the requirements of the, of the Harton Fletcher overlay district. Those will be about 4,500 square feet, 6,300 square feet. And these are minimums. We believe as we go through the process with architecture, it's very likely the building will be larger than this. But as part of the agreement, we wanted to, to still, for you, you under-promise and over-deliver. So the idea is that we wanted this to be the starting point as the minimum, and to go up from there. Potential uses, we talked about a lot of potential uses. Either restaurant, taproom, tasting room, retail, hardware home services. We were talking about that a little earlier before the meeting. Professional and office, educational, live, work. There is a lot of interest. I think Mark will tell you that he gets a lot of phone calls about this, there's a lot of interest. The town has been great about sharing folks that are interested, interested parties. And we're excited about the idea that if we can execute these agreements, this allows us to say the property is truly under contract. We now have, quote, "control" over the property and can, can market the property properly. So we're excited about what these potential uses may be and, and bring those to you. Tentative schedule, just, this is very, very high level. So assuming the, the agreement is approved, the next couple of months, you're going to see Mark in hard at work, marketing these mixed-use and the restaurant buildings. We'll be completing the site planning, traffic study, which is already underway with DOT, and other submittal items for the initial phase of development. We're going to continue to work with DOT for the acquisition of the residual right-of-way. That is a really, really big deal. The, the buildings on the corner is, is really handling until we can get that, that right-of-way from DOT. We appreciate the town's commitment. They've been great writing letters of support for DOT, so we're hopeful that that'll help us move that process along more quickly. Going forward from April, we're looking at completing the remaining due diligence items for the project, completing the design and permitting for phase one, and ultimately completing the purchase of the property. So those are some of the things that you'll see over the course of the spring and summer. And then as we get into the fall, we will look towards completing site work for phase one, the remaining property and connector road, completing the phase one building and submitting plans for, for phase two. So that will be over the course, basically, from October of this year through October of, of 23. And that's about as far out as our horizon sees. We, we really have to get the property secured for DOT before we can give you definitive schedules as we go forward. We think probably we're looking at six months, give or take, to be able to get to a point where we know for certain when that property can be secured for DOT. And that concludes our presentation. Be glad to try to answer any questions that you all, if you all have.
Do we have any questions?
I just appreciate, you know, you all working with us, going back and forth. Like you said, we went back and forth many times, and, and I think what we ended up with turned out to be good product.
We agree. Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
I think there's been a lot of back and forth, and we appreciate everyone's council's patience and developer team, our attorneys, getting to this point. And although, you know, if you approve this now, it may feel like we've finished something, and you have, but there's going to be a lot of ongoing monitoring and work and communication. So now we've got to stay on top of that, and we're really hopeful for the projects you all to be proud of, the community to be proud of. Pretty easy.
We appreciate you coming to, to meet with us, to hash out a lot of different issues. Thank you so much.
You are welcome. I have feeling that they send a good bit of us as we go forward and give you, and we're excited about that.
And I do want to say Ashley did a really good job last week answering all our questions and concerns. She's very patient with us and did a good job.
I appreciate that, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Councilman.
Do we have a motion to approve the economic development, repurchase and celebration as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve the EDA and the purchase and sale, as it's been presented.
And we need also, yeah, the, the repurchase need to be a part of that.
We have a yard.
Yeah, well, include that, include that as a part of the repurchase.
Okay.
Yes, if the motion could include that third agreement, the repurchase agreement, that would be a hundred percent.
Okay, do we make a motion?
Sure, I stand corrected. I'll make a motion to approve the EDA and the purchase and sale agreement and, and...
Repurchase.
The repurchase agreement as well.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
For me, this is something that has kind of got thrown in for the end right there. And thank you, William, for, for being with us. It's been a good while, I would appreciate it. But a couple of small concerns for the public record that you, that I had right off the bat, Bill addressed in was, I know a lot, a lot of folks will see these drawings and stuff. It's, uh, my, one of my first concerns, remember, Will, was the infrastructure. Making sure the infrastructure was, kind of handled this, a lot going on in one small footprint. Be sure that the EDA can be, so make sure it stays at level D and C. So that, that, that satisfies right there. And the next one, the council also knows, was the residential piece. I'd like to say thank you for dropping it from three to two stories. I'd like to personally say that, and if you actually listen and, and look at that, also with the market study, so thank you for that. Because I know that the residents on the study that Mark did about two years ago, they want more retail in the restaurants and stuff in this area versus the markets. So thank you for keeping that in mind as well.
All those papers say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It is approved. Next, I have a long agenda, there's a discussion, often a couple of council meetings, too, yeah? Any thoughts, any thoughts on that?
So we, so Mayor, Council, we could be, I prepared the press release outlining the process. Y'all saw that it's gone out on the town's, well, the application, this description's on the town's website. We put something on our Facebook page, and of course, the press release was sent to the media. I, I, you know, I had to interview a WLS, so, you know, the word's getting out there. And we've had one application submitted and one picked up that will probably be submitted. And that's kind of where we're at. I mean, the, the applications, again, I know it's been mentioned, the deadline, but it's, so it'll run January the 5th through January 19th is the deadline at five to receive applications. As soon as we get those, we will forward those to you for your review. And then you've got the special call meeting scheduled for 5:00 PM on Monday, January the 24th. So I'd be prepared prior to that time to whatever discussion or vetting of the applications you want to consider before you potentially vote on a nominee. And then we'll also, you know, sometimes people may not know if they're on the boundary of District 2. Let's just say we get an application from someone, they're outside, they're not actually in District 2. You know, we'll try and let them know and let you know if something like that happens, but... I think that was it.
Do we have anything else to comment? Seeing none, moving on to the next time on the agenda, the budget estimate for plant paving projects. Again, Captain McGill, associate.
Um, Ben cannot be here, so Scott.
Scott.
Yep, with McGill Associates, Scott Burwell, is here to give some comments on that. Y'all received a copy of the preliminary email.
I emailed it to you. Scott's could provide some comments and then we're also looking at kind of a tentative budget or ceiling, if you will, within our current appropriations and what's in that dispersing account. And I'll comment more on that when Scott finishes in and Jabbo Pressley here to provide some thoughts on this.
Sure. So, you know, Scott Burwell, McGill associates and, and Kathy and I, but I was able to get up to them and kind of come up to speed. In general, for this year's project, we're kind of looking at picking Glen Springs Drive, Berdington Court, Edredwood Court, concept chase development, and then Jabbo was already walking the roads with Ben, kind of got the preliminary plans complete and the, and the cost estimate marks it. So again, where are we standing now? I typically, I can't remember exactly what your number was, you know, marks it two.
We're, we're looking in the neighborhood of two-hundred-and-fifty thousand now. I mean, it, it comes in a little bit higher. We're trying to put maybe an additional at, at not, not to see two-seventy. Now it's, you know, design fees, construction, bid, everything.
Gotcha. So kind of what we looked at is, you know, a few different options that we have, the way we set up these contracts, typically is you can flex contracts. So again, we can basically, the plans are ready, we can essentially bid the project in total, tell bidders, and the town has the discretion based on budget typically and whatever factor. So we can certainly look a lot out there. As I know last year, Ben mentioned that Hart Fletch became pretty well underestimated, I believe. And so, in fact, again, we have the plans done. There's really not much difference on Hart to bid every road versus two roads. So that is one option, kind of bid it in totality, see where the bids land, and then be able to kind of pick and choose what would be the budget. The other option that Ben and I talked about this morning is we could certainly split Glen Springs Drive at a kind of a defined location and be able to kind of cut that one in half and then pick either Berdington Court, Edredwood Court, either one of those kind of come right off of Glen Springs and have that be a project and bid that, see what, that's going to get closer to that two-hundred-and-fifty number, just, just by estimate. So again, we, we're willing to do whatever the council kind of decides to do. If you have any certain questions you may have, discuss the estimate more, discuss the roads, plans, again, depending on what you're setting up.
So the one I'm hearing is that we don't have enough power money to cover all four?
Right. The construction estimate that McGill has provided is, was just over four-hundred thousand.
It's right at, just the construction with a ten percent contingency is like three-hundred-and-one-thousand seventy-nine percent.
Okay, so it's just under, we've been getting really competitive bids. And that part of the reason we do this is now in the winter months is contractors aren't as busy, getting ready, we're kind of getting ahead of them, setting up the price. So it's, so it's working. It has worked well for several years. We're doing this like three or four years now, roughly. And we've been fortunate, one of them that's been getting a bid quite often has their own asphalt plant, so that helps tremendously. That's not to say they'll get the low bid again. We invite a whole bunch of bidders. So, you know, there's a possibility we could get something competitive enough and maybe do everything that's on there. You know, I, I always hesitate that that's going to happen. We've been pretty fortunate. McGill, you know, Ben and Scott and the other staff usually try and estimate it high enough to give, you know, some room where bids typically might come under that. So they, they try and, you know, over, over.
Yeah, we, we try to be conservative on them or something.
Over-deliver, under-promise, I guess, in, in putting those quotes together on the construction estimates. So we're recommending that you bid it as is and then you've got, there's some ways with the unit pricing, if we need to reduce it, to get it in that two-fifty, two-toe-seven-thousand threshold of money that we have available. Try and do all or not all, most of it, you know, in a logical way as far as mobilization costs and so forth.
It sounds good, but I definitely would not be in favor of doing half of the street and coming back to another half. I'd rather get as much as you can, but I don't want to be the half of the street.
Well, the half would not be. Yeah, the, the half would not be just like one lane. It would be kind of, if you head up Glen Springs Road, it has a bend kind of towards the end.
Just stop it.
So you could kind of stop it right there because really track that kind of splits both ways to get out. So you can, you can essentially create a new joint for the following year. You could just make a, or we'd leave off and kind of go. But again, it's back to, we can certainly avoid now that it's, we have the estimate to where the contractor goes. We may delete Berdington Court, or we may delete Edredwood Court. That way we can have everything accounted for, know what that cost is per bid and tell on the bid and say, these are, these could go up and down, we need to price it according to it. We may cut partial, complete road, even at that time, just to be transparent. We're going to make a little bit of a.
And you'll have time when the bids come in, depending on how it turns out, to think more about it. And we'll try and come up with some recommendations or any recommendation so that when that information, even if you have to make a decision tonight, the bigger decision is just, do we just bid everything that's there? We recommend you bid it because they could do some tweaks with unit costs to reduce part of what's done there, but try and do it the most logical way. Your thoughts would look?
Okay, so it doesn't mean to do it all, just to say.
That's, that's very right. We will be open and transparent of all when you say that. It's like what we need to, there's always, we don't have to tell on the number, but we say there is a certain money out, certain budget of money out there that this is the scope of work that we see pricing. And again, it's, it's very easy to just say, you know, again, you're not going to build the street completely. Most of this stuff is, you're reaching an economy scale to where it's not going to be, someone's going to crack out, well, I need a cheaper asphalt price because you took away two streets from it. It should be, like Mark said, particularly there as around asphalt.
Anything else? Do we have a motion to?
I guess maybe just make a motion to bid the project as presented.
No motion to bid the project as presented.
Still moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those matters, they got it. Those opposed. We just bid it out.
Did you have anything, Jabbo?
Thank you all. Appreciate that.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
And we have your comments.
Okay. I didn't have much changing from last week. We talked about the budget schedule. I need to email you the updated chart on it. So the only change was where I presented, recommended budget to you. They call it a budget retreat, but really a glorified budget workshop where I go over that whole document or the presentation. We changed that from May seventh to April thirtieth. I, I, I will email this around the updated chart so you'll have that. And I'm sorry, I meant to have it copied out in front of you this evening. I didn't do that. But again, that budget retreat was changed from May seventh to April thirtieth. That's a Saturday. And we typically don't go all day. We, and we block that out, but, so that's just update on the process schedule for FY twenty-two, twenty-three. I know we talked a little bit earlier about the R F P. for the demo services on the buildings associated with Town Center Hart Fletcher project. I'm working on a draft R F P. It's become a little bit more complicated. You know, we have three buildings that are in the railroad right away, so I've got to put a provision in there where the selected contractor bidder would be responsible for giving an application and write a entry agreement for them to tear down those buildings. I met on site today with the representatives from Blue Ridge Railroad, you know, railroad, to just make sure they were clear, this is what we're talking about and you're not using, really Fletcher Long Gardens using two of those three buildings, but just make sure they weren't, there wasn't any need, there was no surprises. But that complicates the bidding a little bit. It'll probably bring up the cost a little bit too. But my, my goal is to get that out this month and then see if we can hit our timeline right for possibly in February, come back with the lowest responsible bidder and then get that process going. Because we need to get it going because now you approved the agreements tonight, so the, the clock's running on that too. And then once you select a bidder, aside from, you know, some of the little bit more complicated with the three buildings at railroad right away, the others are fairly cut and dry for demo and removal and they're pretty good at doing that and getting there and getting that done. So I'll keep you updated on that. Just the one last thing I was going to mention, the gateway sign. So you know, we, we finally got our design approval together for that. And so this is the gateway sign, you know, by First Citizens Bank. The panels are coming off, or hatchings have been removed, and we're anticipating the new ones going out to be signed in there. Should be before the end of this month is what the sign contractor has targeted. And Public Works will be cleaning the base of the structure there and the stucco part that it'll go back on. So that's coming. I, I know we've had some, obviously you all would like to see it up there and so would Lee's staff, but some people in the public have been, you know, inquiring about it since it's, in its current state, it's not, it's looking a little old, so in, in need of updating. And then, and then again, in the upcoming budget process, we'd like to look at another gateway sign, maybe at the south end, coming from Town on twenty-five, and then maybe following years on the east west, and particularly coming from the west near the airport since it's a lot of traffic, a lot of people coming, you know, down Panbridge. So that's all I had for comments.
Anything else, Council? We have a motion to return. Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All of them, they say out. Those opposed?